A couple of weeks ago, just to go ahead and remind you that the next meeting will be on the 27th of July, which is a Tuesday. I have a wedding rehearsal that night over in Alexandria, so I won't be here. So we'll just bump into that Tuesday night. So if you want to write that down on your calendar or your phone. But anyway, we talked about things that we struggle with. Things that get us distracted, which today is just going to be a continuation of what we talked about. And it asks us to write thoughts about things that we struggle with. It asks you to write some of those things down. So kind of jumping off of that, Scripture there on the page, let's see, Week 4, page 58. There's no number there, but it's page 58. It says, "The angel of the Lord appeared to him and said to him, 'The Lord is with you, O valiant warrior.'" Of course, Judges, that's talking about Gideon there. And Gideon was, in his family status, he was the youngest in his community. He was essentially just an average guy at best. So he really just, you know, he's like, there's just, there really ain't much I can do. And that's how, you know, I feel like a lot of our men feel that way. And society is trying to suppress us as men, as being leaders that we're supposed to be, and particularly being godly leaders. And I think, you know, Gideon probably had a little bit of that same fear, that same complex. And then the angel of the Lord come to him and says, "Look, God sees something completely different than what you see in yourself. And He's preparing you for something really big." And I encourage you to go back and read those Scriptures. And we'll have a few other Scripture references throughout the study. I encourage you really look into those. So on page 60 there, it says, "Kingdom Man Rising," and it says, "Start." And this is Session 4. I think we'll, two sessions, I think we'll get through it. We'll see how we go tonight and make a decision on that. But, you know, we talked about getting up in the last session, getting up from your problems. And now this one is really talking about, now get moving. Don't just get up, but get moving. Go do something and get beyond where you're stuck at. And it gives an illustration there. It says, "No man with an intention of marrying a woman that he's dating is gonna two-time her. No man in his right mind is gonna do that. And he's gonna put his focus on her. Man, you're gonna put your best foot forward, do everything you can to show her how loyal you are, how committed you are." And I would think, you know, most of us probably have tried to do that. And then it starts tying that into a spiritual aspect. This is common sense, right? If you want her to fall for you, you want to do everything you can. And now, again, put this in a spiritual aspect. This is common sense to men, to most men. But somehow, we lose common sense when it comes to maintaining and cultivating our relationship with God. And if you take that to your relationship at home, and sometimes that happens too. You know, we kind of forget about cultivating and maintaining. It's like somebody, if somebody told me, or maybe I read it somewhere, it says, "Always date your wife," right? Never get over that. And I was talking to somebody the other day, and I was talking about, I try to always compliment my wife and everything. I was talking to another friend of mine, and I think she was just making fun of her husband. She said, "He don't ever, hardly ever tell me I'm pretty. I have to get in front of him and say, 'Do you not see me?'" You know? "Okay, you're pretty, honey." And, you know, we overlook things real easily. But think about that, how we do with God, about maintaining and cultivating our relationship with God. I mean, if you separate yourselves, and I think anybody that has ever done it, if we had long enough, you could give a testimony of how it affected negatively your spiritual life, your spiritual growth, when you go to separate yourself from the fellowship of brothers and sisters in Christ. We need that. So to two-time God is to set any competing interest at the same level as Him in our hearts. And a lot of times, we think, "Oh, well, I don't..." But your life, or your lifestyle, or your choices say something totally different. And, you know, we think, "Well, I would never two-time God." But that could show up in a number of areas: entertainment, whatever our focus is on, relationships, addictions, money, and any number of things there. It says, "We've already seen in this study, idolatry is intimacy with an image, with anything, really. We don't have to bow down to a carved statue. You know, we watch movies, and we watch TV, and we read. We read back in the Old Testament where they, you know, they would worship false, fake gods. And we think, "Well, I don't do that. I worship the moon, or cows, or elephants, or monkeys, or some wood statue of Buddha. I don't do any of those things." But we still have all kinds of idolatry in our life, because we end up worshiping things. We live things above God, or we put them in God's place. We worship idols when we allow anything to usurp or get in the way of God's rightful place in our lives. And Satan wants nothing more than to distract you as a man. And as men, we're probably the most easily distracted there is. I mean, we're like that. I forget what that cartoon is, but it's like a prehistoric cartoon, and there's a squirrel in there. And he chases an acorn, the whole movie. And he is just oblivious to everything else around him, because he is focused on that acorn, no matter what. And it's amazing, he don't get killed all through the movie. But he keeps his, and somehow, that acorn ends up, he gets out of the way of stuff. But, you know, he'll get off on something, and oop, he's after that acorn again. We're really, really easily distracted. So I want to pray before we watch this session of the movie. That's about, not the movie, but the video. Brother Tony there, it's about 12 minutes long, and kind of elaborates a little bit more on this, if you will. Let's bow. Dear Heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord. And I just pray as we study through this together, Lord, that we each look within ourselves, Lord, as we watch Brother Tony, Lord, and how he just elaborates this to us, Lord. And, Lord, I pray that we open our hearts and our lives, Lord, every aspect of what we're about, that we open it up to you, Lord. That we allow you to look in, that we allow you, Lord, to come in and change, to clean up, to remove what needs to be done. Lord, I just pray that we're obedient to you, Lord. And I pray that the many ways that I'm sure each and every one of us has something in our life, where we're two-timing you, we're putting something else in your place, ahead of you, maybe beside you, but it's not in its rightful place, Lord, and you are not in your rightful place in our lives, Lord, if we don't allow it. Lord, we just thank you for the opportunity to study your Word, in Jesus' name. Amen.
God is leading men who will stop toying with other gods, who will return to the one true God, so that we can get His help to change our lives, our circumstances, and our communities. You want to be that kind of man who stops two-timing God, giving Him the uncompromising commitment He deserves and demands, that you'll be a man that God can use to make a difference. The number-one sin in the Bible, second to none, is idolatry. From Genesis to Revelation, you will see God condemning idols. Now let me define an idol, the God substitute. An idol is any noun, person, place, thing, or thought, that you look to as your source. Whenever anything becomes your source, it is an automatic idol. There are primitive idols that we may not identify with today, but then there are American idols. It can be materialism, it can be greed, it can be relationships, it can be money, it can be toys, it can be career, because it's your source. And God will always judge idolatry. Far too many men today are not seeing God move, because they've chosen other gods. They don't call them other gods, but they treat them as no other gods, because they look to that, outside of the one true God, to be their source, instead of just their resource. God can switch resources. He never wants you to switch Him as your source. The Book of Judges is a book of God's judgment on idolatry, and it affected the whole nation. You see, the closer the true God is to a life or to a society, the more ordered that life or society will be. The further God is from a life or a society, the more chaotic it will become. And so you see in the Book of Judges, constant judgment of God, because the people drifted from Him. And so He had to raise up a leader. They were called judges, servants of God, who were told to bring the people back to God. In Chapter 6 of Judges, we find a man. When the Midianites were being used by God to judge His people, God is always looking for a man. Ezekiel 22:30 says, "God was searching for a man, so he would not have to curse the land, but He could find him." There were plenty of males, but He couldn't find a man. So evidently, you could be a male and not a man. Because when God talks about a man, He's not just talking about a male. He's talking about a male who has submitted himself to divine rule and authority. This man's name was Gideon in Judges 6. God comes to Gideon through the angel and says, "I'm calling you. It's time to get going, because my people need deliverance. But in order for me to deliver them, I need a man who will lead them out of their idolatry." He tells Gideon, "I'm calling you." Gideon wants to know, "Wait a minute, I'm a nobody. I'm a nothing. People don't know me. I don't have a name. I don't have prestige. I don't have credentials." But the angel calls Gideon a warrior. "I am telling you who I'm gonna make you. I'm not discussing who you view yourself to be." See, far too many men have the wrong self-image. They look at how lonely they are, they look at that background, they look at how bad things have been in their lives. They look like Gideon was hiding in the winepress from the Midianites, and think, "God can't use me." But God called him a warrior. Later, He's gonna let him know, "You're a bail fighter." Bail was the idol that they worshiped Israel of the cultures around them. He said, "No, you're gonna be a bail fighter. You're gonna be a warrior. And I would talk to you in terms of what you are to become." You know, my daughter Priscilla constantly reminds my grandsons, along with her husband Jerry, about what they ought to become. They speak into their lives, their destiny, the kind of character they ought to have, the kind of leadership they ought to exemplify. They tell them, even in their teenage years, what you are going to be, in spite of what other folks say that you are, in spite of what you deem yourself to be, because God wants to project. We don't have enough men helping other folk to project, project for who you are supposed to be, not who the culture says you are. "No, Gideon, you're not just a nobody in a winepress. You're a warrior, and I have big plans for you, buddy. I have big plans for you, because you're gonna lead a whole nation to victory." Did you know, mister, you are somebody? You can sit up with your back straight, you can man up, and you can let God tell you who you are, in spite of who you perceive yourself to be, that you allow Him to give you your identity, you don't get to make up your own? That you may think you're a nobody, but God called you a somebody. So you better start speaking to yourself and remind other people to speak to you in terms of who God declares you are, and to find other people who will give you God's definition. Far too many men are being given the wrong definition. And so He says, "I'm gonna call on you." Now, the first thing you need to do, Gideon, He tells him in Judges, Chapter 6, is get the idols out of your own house. That's what He tells him. He says, "You've got too many idols in your own crib. So I can use you, but I can't use you to fix the culture if I can't even get you to fix your house." What does the Bible say about leaders? It says, "They've gotta manage their own house well." You can't handle the big congregation if you can't manage the little congregation. So don't ask God to use you outside of the house if He can't use you inside of the house. Are you having devotions with your family? Are you praying with your mate? Do they have to wake you up for church, or are you waking them up for church? Because you have said that you're gonna set the agenda under God for your home, so that God can use you to be a deliverer for the culture. So Gideon goes into his own home, and he gets rid of the foreign gods. He sets spiritual priorities than the house, so that God can now use it bigger than the house. Many men pray, "God, use me out there." And God says, "We're gonna start in here, because we're gonna get some practice for the bigger call that God has on your life." God has a destiny for every man. That's not a leftover destiny. That's a significant destiny. He wants you to get going where you are until He shows you what's next. And God often won't show you what's next until you move in what He's giving you right there, even if it views or seems insignificant where you are. You are a significant person in the plan of God, and God has often called people who would be looked at as inconsequential to be bail fighters, getting rid of the idolatry. The trouble in our nation today is we have too many men with too many idols who cannot be used for God, because they have been too identified with false gods. So it's time now for men to step up and get going, to not reclassify yourself. You remember Moses? Moses didn't think he was anybody after he had blown it. And for 40 years, he's taken care of shit. And right now, he's a nobody. And God tells him, "Hey, Mo, go tell Pharaoh, let my people go." Moses said, "Who, who, who, you talking to me? I can't talk. I stutter. I'm a sheep herder. I can't, I can't, you can't use me?" He said, "Moses, let me tell you who you are." He called him twice, "Moses, Moses." When God calls your name twice, that means He's got a purpose for you. "Mo, Mo, look, let me tell you who you are. Let me tell you how I'm gonna use you. Let me give you a purpose. Let me give you a destiny. Let me give you a dignity." He said, "How can I get started?" Well, Gideon had what Moses had. He had a divine encounter. Ask God to give you a burning bush experience. Ask God to give you a Gideon experience, where God shows up and lets you know that He is with you. He'll do that. If you're willing to fight the idolatry in your life and in your home, He will show you that He has a destiny for your life and a purpose. Watch this, because this is always true of Kingdom Man Rising, bigger than you. Whenever God calls a man, He doesn't call the man for Himself. He calls the man to do something bigger than the man could do apart from Him. And that's the call of every man's life. Do you know, you are somebody special? You're not ordinary. You are extraordinary. You're not average. You're superlative. Because God is calling you, Gideon, you Moses, to do something bigger than you ever dream was possible, if He can get you to get out of your winepress, to stop letting the culture hold you hostage, to deal with the idols that are consuming you and those that surround you, and to decide, "Yes, I'm gonna be defined by God now, and I'm gonna go public, loving but responsible, and let it be known, I don't deal with idols. I deal with the true and living God. And I'm gonna raise other men up." In fact, Gideon rose 300 up, 300 men who defeated a whole army, because these were men. He was a kingdom man. He rose up 300 kingdom men. And He turned a nation around against the assault of an enemy, because that's what happens when kingdom men begin to rise.
Right. I don't know about you, but I like listening to Brother Tony. Just a few things that I picked up watching that video, and I haven't watched it previously today. I wanted to watch it with y'all and just get that same exact experience as you. But just some of the things that I highlighted out of that video were an uncompromising commitment that God deserves. That is what every one of us are called to do. And the fact that, and it's repeated in the study another time or two, the number-one sin. And you see it throughout the Scriptures. And God knows that we're weak, you know, when He had called the children of Israel to go into these lands. And He called them with a specific purpose, and said, "You need to follow this to the teeth." And the reason He did, because He knew if they didn't, that they would get caught up in idolatry. I mean, we see it throughout the Scriptures. I mean, you look at the Sadducees and Pharisees. You know what their idol was, besides money, was the law, the law. They made the law a guide. And idolatry all through there. So God will always judge idolatry. When there's idolatry in your life, there's never gonna be peace, ever. There's not gonna be peace. And the closer God is, the more there will be peace in our life, the more there will be order. You know, He talked about that in a whole society when we led Him. So we've got to submit ourself to the divine will of God. And when we do that, you know, we're gonna be who we're supposed to be. And I love reading that story of Gideon. You know, he got all these men together, hundreds and hundreds and hundreds, I guess maybe thousands. I don't remember the exact number. And then He, you know, the Lord said, "That's too many." He said, "Well, how in the world am I gonna figure this out?" And I like the illustration, or the way that He used, you know, they went down to the water, and He says, "Take them down to the water." And all of them that bent their heads, you know, they knelt down. And if they took their eyes off what they were supposed to be watching, He said, "That ain't them." And all of them, I've got something going on with my eye, all of them that kept their eyes up, and they grabbed the water, but they kept a look. He said, "There's your men, and that's where the 300 come from." But we've got to submit ourself to the divine will of God, be who you're supposed to be. And you're not going to find it outside of the will of God. Now, you're gonna find some stuff, and you're gonna find some things that the world will wrap up and hug you for, and encourage you to do, but they're not in the will of God. You gotta submit to it. And just like He told Gideon, that is 100% as applicable to us today. Clean up your own house first. Clean up your own house first. I mean, you're not gonna come in this church and fool God when your house is a mess, whether it's your relationship, whether it's the things that are in your cabinets, whether it's the things that are in your drawer, whether it's the things that are on your TV, in your pickup, whatever, you need to clean up your own house first. That's where it's got to start. And I mean, that's what He did with Gideon. Gideon's like, "Okay, well, I'm ready." He says, "You've got some work to do with the house first." And that, to me, that was that first step of showing His commitment, and He did that. And, you know, it's, there's a lot of things. You know, you watch a lot of movies, you know, they always, the alcoholic, you know, he's got drinks hidden everywhere. You know, the family comes in, and they go through the house, they pour it all out, and they throw it all away, and get it out, whatever it is. Maybe it is alcohol that we didn't get rid of. But I promise you, alcohol will never, ever bring any glory to God in your home. And I know a lot of Christians that got cabinets full. You need to get it out. It will never bring any glory to God, nor will it show your children or just people around you. You better clean up your own house first. You gotta set spiritual priorities in your house. I like what He said, "Are you waking your family up, or is your wife getting you up when it comes to getting ready to go to church?" I mean, that's a big responsibility. It ought to be, you know, that we lead that charge. Unfortunately, it's not that way in a lot of homes, but it ought to be. You gotta set spiritual priorities. Too many of us avoid the Lord and His will. I mean, why do you think that there aren't more people when it comes to actual formal study of the Word of God, Sunday nights, Sunday morning? You know, it's easy to come to the congregational service, right? That's a little more popular. That's a little more informal. You're kind of masked a little better. But when it comes to sitting down and studying, Sunday night, Wednesday night, like this, people, we avoid the Lord and His will, or at least we try to. The Lord speaks to us. You know, people say, "Well, I can't have an experience like Gideon." You know what? We got way more than what Gideon had right here. We got way more. God will speak to you every time you open this, and you look into it. There is something in here for you. I promise you, there is. But too many of us avoid His will. All throughout the Scriptures, He speaks to us, and speaks to us, and speaks to us. But are we willing to pursue that? And if we pursue it, are we willing to listen to it? And if we listen to it, are we willing to apply it? And then, the more mature you get, the more you're gonna expect it. And that might drive you to the decision, you know what, I need to quit hanging around with so-and-so, because I got to start expecting that. And, you know, we can try to influence and impact people, but, you know, you have to be really, really careful with that one too, because a lot of times, we think we're mature. You know, Scripture talks about it. It says, "Be careful if you think you're standing. You just might be sinking." Corinthians talks about that. Are we willing to pursue it? Are we willing to listen to it? And are we willing to apply it? So there, on page 62, it says, "Man up," the section, "Man up." It's got a little Scripture out of Jema there. It says, "Those who cling to worthless idols turn away from God's love for them." And I want to read it. The King James says it just a little bit different. It means the same thing in this Scripture here. It says, "They that observe lying vanities would be worthless idols, forsake their own mercy." So those who cling to worthless idols turn away from God's love for them. You know, when people start making excuses and start avoiding the will of God, we start turning away more and more. And it's turning away from the love that God has for us. I want to read the note here from verse 8. It says, "Those who worship false gods are abandoning any hope for mercy from the Lord, because He absolutely is gonna judge idolatry. Any object of our devotion that replaces God is a lying vanity or a worthless idol." It says, "Here, we deserve, or we deceive our own selves with something that is ultimately empty and foolish." Make sure nothing takes God's rightful place in your life. And, you know, and I've talked about it many times. I had somebody tell me the other day, "It's a man. We miss you in church. I haven't seen you in weeks." "Oh, I enjoy your TV videos." "Well, I'm glad you do, but you need to get back to church. You need to get back to church." And we've unfortunately developed some lazy Christians. And I'm not saying that, you know, you can't get anything out of watching a video. I hope people are watching the videos, but if you have an opportunity to come to church, I hope you come to church, because nothing really replaces that at all. So question there, what does it mean to cling to an idol? So anybody, what do you guys think, to cling to an idol? Give me an example or your thoughts.
Put that before God.
Yep. You know, we get to dependent on things. We get to longing for things. We get to hanging on to things. And it starts to really break those down here in a little bit, the bottom of that page. How do idols cause us to turn away from God's love for us? Because we get to dependent on them for some type of satisfaction, whatever that is. We get to dependent on other things. So again, it repeats it there. The number-one sin in the Bible, second to none, is idolatry. And it talks about idolatry from Genesis over to Revelations, all throughout the Scriptures. It's a God substitute, just a God substitute. Whenever anything becomes your source, it becomes an idol. Man, I see people that, I don't know, there's this old guy that used to park out by 171 and clean his truck over not far from your place. He's parking up on the side of the road and over back behind 171 South, he'd park on the corner right there. And I don't know why, but he parked out of the corner. Man, I guarantee you, he rubbed the paint off that thing. He cleaned it so much, I don't know, time after time. And I think he's actually working for somebody, cleaning vehicles now. Maybe he was advertising, right? But, man, he was in love with that truck. And we get in love with things like that. And we go to putting so much into something that has no lasting value, none. But we'll put so many things, God will always, always, always judge idolatry. So He lists five things there. Materialism, five idols. These are general. But materialism, you know, looks, looks above everything. You've heard the saying, you know, "Man, oh, so-and-so, boy, he's trying his best to keep up with the Joneses." I don't know who the Joneses were. I'm sure that's connected to somebody back in the day. But it's an old saying, and somebody, some people say, "Man, he is Jonesing." And you're wanting to be better than everyone. And you're wanting to be better than everybody else. You're wanting to have whatever everybody else has, you know, you want the best look, you wanna have the biggest amount, you wanna have the best condition. And that was a thing too, and the Lord talked about throughout the scriptures, because people got caught up in the way they look. You know, if I look blessed, then everybody's gonna think I'm blessed, so then I'll be blessed. That's not how it works. God warns through the scriptures about, you know, dress in certain ways and trying to be flashy and showy. And nothing about dressing nice, I'm not saying that. But some people, that took the place, that becoming an idol to them. And it talks about greed. Man, you know, I don't know how many times I've heard people, our Christians say, you know, the Bible says that money's the root of all evil. No, Bible don't say that, nowhere in it, nowhere from Genesis all the way to Revelation, that is not in there. It talks about the love, greed. And some people, it's winning at all costs. I remember when I was in high school, I don't remember what year it was, the Pickering won a state championship football that year. They had a running back, I'm telling you, everybody said, man, that baby runs like a grown man. Well, guess what? He was like twenty-two. He was a grown man, you know, twenty-two years old, if I remember correctly. The principal and the head coach fudged his birth certificate. They lost the state championship. It was taken from them, embarrassed, people lost their jobs. You know, I mean, at any cost, greed, at any cost. And we get caught up in those things if we're not careful. Relationships, some people think, man, boy, if I, if I just, if I could just get to know us, I was watching, uh, oh, what's the one, Mayberry? Barney Five? Andy Griffith Show, we was watching that last night. And Barney, no wait, who's Andy, is the sheriff, right? Yeah, Andy got invited by one of his buddies to go to this clubhouse, the Esquire Club, was up at the state capitol. And then he came back and he told Barney, and Barney just got plum beside himself. And then first thing he said, man, I'm kinda worried about Andy, I don't know if they'll, I don't know if they'll go for Andy. So they went, you know, they got their little suits on, old Barney had him a little bow tie, and Andy, you know, just a nice little suit. And they went in there and just like what you could think, Barney got on everybody's nerves in the whole thing. And they came by next, the next day, Barney was just jumping up and down the next morning. Won't know, did they call, did they call, can we join, can we join? Man, that's gonna put us in a different level, this is gonna be the best thing that's ever happened in our life. And he got all caught up in, man, if we could just hang out with them people, we'll be somebody. Relationships. Man, I heard a preacher say one time, I was just getting started in children's ministry. This would have been around '02, '03. Uh, and this preacher lived not too far from where we used to live. And he was talking about different people in our church. And he said, boy, I wish I had so-and-so in my church. Man, he got deep pockets. I mean, that, just how spiritual is that? He was thinking about that relationship, boy, if I could just have a relationship with him and get him in our church, man, we would never have to worry about hit ties for half the church. Relationships, we wanna be the most popular. You know, I've said many times, my goal wasn't to fill the church, my goal was for you to get full. That's my goal. I mean, sure, I love seeing the numbers, but I would rather have ten that are full and wanna serve God than I have a church full that just come on Sunday morning. I'd much rather have than ten. And that's really what it got down to with Gideon. Gideon kinda got caught up in the numbers a little bit, God said, nope, too many, nope, too many. Narrow it down, narrow it down. Sports, hmm, I just wrote godlike, godlike. I found a video years ago, I showed it in one of my sermons. And it showed this foreign country where these people had dressed up in these headdresses, and they had all this paint on, and they were worshiping this fake statue. And the thing was like, man, how can people do that? And then it panned over to a football game. People were dressed up, they were painted up, they were worshiping the team. I mean, that's what they were doing, sports. I mean, we have brought sports to a godlike status. Now, I think, I think sports is getting humbled just a little bit here lately, and they need to. I mean, when, you know, poor teacher here in Vernon Parish is making twenty thousand a year, we paying a guy a hundred and twenty-five million to throw a football. We sure got things messed. You tell me we ain't put sports to a godlike status if we'll pay a guy a hundred and twenty-five million a year? A year to throw a football or a baseball or put on boxing gloves? Actually, boxers are, they're way up there. Uh, unbelievable. I mean, how far have we come from sitting in a Colosseum, watching people kill each other in Roman days? We ain't, we ain't left that at all, we still. Uh, sports, career, everybody needs a good career. But success can't be your God. It will become idolatry to us. Some people, I mean, it becomes, they offered me, when it was a different boss we had, and he ended up being the chief of the whole Forest Service. And he hit me up one time to come to a meeting, because he's an old Southern boy. He said, Jason, he said, uh, man, I'd sure like to see you putting in some of these upper level jobs. I said, no, thank you. I said, uh, I just built the house right in the middle of my farm. He said, man, people sell them every day. I said, not me. He said, well, rent it. I said, no, sir, I ain't gonna do it. I mean, he was, his job was his life. Success was his life. I said, if you wanna promote me, do it right here in Vernon Parish, and I'll take it. And eventually they did. But success, being the leader, leading thing, I mean, we can get so many things that become idolatry in our life. But how are idols, how are the idols that we listed, you know, different things here, widely accepted by men today? You know, where do you see, just in general, somebody give me an answer, how are the idols that, you know, we see, how are they accepted today?
More like sports, man, Monday is football.
Yeah, Sunday, you know, it's the big football day.
People go to that game, it's at church.
Yep.
They don't even think about that, probably.
Yeah, we, you know, I think about, you know, what's the hot topic right now? And again, I don't remember the lady's name. She's, you know, one of the fastest women in the world, just got kicked out of the Olympics because she was smoking dope. And, uh, and which is 100% illegal. And people say that's not a performance enhancing drug. Yes, it is. The athletes will use that to settle them. You get settled and you get focused, and you have enhanced your ability to perform. That's one of the reasons, it's outlawed. And now they're saying, of course, you know, the whole transgender thing, they're saying, well, you, you'll let a man that identifies as a woman, so we make things so grotesque, and then it makes what used to be, which actually still is, acceptable. And that's what we're doing, we just, we just keep pushing the bar lower and lower. So what's accepted ends up being lower and lower. So we've painted them all as acceptable, as good, as right. I mean, you never see an alcohol commercial with unhappy people that are fighting, puking their guts up, home destroyed. You never see that on any commercial. I mean, you just see people that are, man, it's the happiest people you see in your life. I mean, they're just having a great time, and they all look nice, and it's just, they've all got nice vehicles. And that's, we painted as acceptable, as good and right and desirable, and all we're doing is making it an idol. That's what we're doing. So how can a sense of entitlement be idolatry? And I think in the last twelve months, twenty-four months, we brought that to a whole new level. I mean, we brought entitlement to a state of idolatry. You know, we brought rights above right. We've brought rights above right. We get so caught up, and sometimes even as Christians, and the Bible warns us against that, it talks about our liberties. But it said, don't take your liberties to the point of abusing them. Don't take your liberties to a point of abusing them. And, uh, but we've made rights, we've put rights above right, and we've put deserve above oath. You know, we deserve these things. So top of page sixty-three there, it says, uh, living with idols. And when we read in Jonah 18 there a minute ago, those who claim to worthless idols turn away from God's love for them. It creates, so when we're living with idols, it creates a distance in our relationship with God. See, Jonah, he's, I kinda think about Jonah, and then I think about Isaiah, and I think about Jeremiah and prophets like that. You know, Jeremiah and Isaiah, they talked their heads off, they preached their heads off, they taught their head off, they served their head off, and nobody listened. And Jonah was the opposite. He didn't wanna talk his head off because he knew they would listen, right? He didn't wanna go talk to the denimites because he was afraid they would convert. But it creates a distance in our relationship with God when we live with idols. We talked about like a two-time and man, our attention is divided. If somebody would, look at Matthew chapter three, somebody wanna look up a verse, Luke, all right? Matthew chapter three, verse twenty-five through twenty-seven. So our attention is divided between God and the idols that we're pursuing. Far too many men are failing to advance in their careers as God has intended or thrive in their homes and communities as they've been designed to do because they have chosen to embrace idolatry. So they've divided between himself and God. You got those?
Did you say Matthew three?
Twenty-five through twenty-seven? If I wrote the right thing down?
It's not in my Bible.
But maybe, let's look at Matthew five.
Matthew five.
That ain't it either, I wrote down the wrong chapter, obviously. But y'all can, you can look up the verse, Google it. So what it talks about is, it says, a house divided cannot stand. It says that Satan, and when, and in Matthew, and I, obviously, it's verse twenty-five to twenty-seven, I don't remember what chapter. And then, and Jesus is the one talking in the scripture, and they were accusing him of being of Satan. And he's like, but I'm working against Satan, and Satan can't even stand divided against himself. If somebody got, they've got signal, look it up, Google it, a house divided against itself, and you'll find it there in a minute, and we'll read it. But what do you think has contributed to a lack of awareness of how our personal choices lead us to idolatry? So again, what do you think has contributed to a lack of awareness of how our personal choices lead us to idolatry? Anybody?
Right there.
Oh, you found it? Lost way off on the, on the chapter, what? So every kingdom divided against itself is brought to desolation, and every city or house divided against itself shall not stand. And if Satan cast out Satan, he's divided against himself, and he, how shall then his kingdom stand? And if Belzbo, you know, was evil, cast out devils, by whom do your children cast them out? Therefore, they shall be your judges. So nothing can stand divided, not even the Satan in his power, or what we think he has power. So what's contributed to the lack? Uh, we've drifted from the Lord. We've drifted out of fellowship with the Lord. And this is, this is a cause for major, major concern. And you still, you got your Bible handy there, Luke? Hebrews ten, I know this one's right. Hebrews ten, verse twenty-two through twenty-five, thank you for looking that up for me a while ago. I write the wrong address down every now and then. I read over my verses Sunday mornings two or three times, and still every now and then I'll miss one. If you write in my head, I'll see it. Hebrews ten?
Ten what?
Yeah, I got it, Hebrews ten, twenty-two through twenty-five.
Says, let us draw near with a true heart and hold the assurance of faith, having our hearts sprinkled from an evil conscience and our bodies washed with pure water. That was twenty-two through?
Twenty-five.
Okay. Let us hold fast the confession of our hope without wavering. For he who promised is faithful, and let us consider one another in order to stir up love and good works, not forsaking the assembling of ourselves together, as is the manner of some, but ensorting one another, and so much the more as you see the day approaching.
So that's talking about gathering, getting together with your brothers and sisters in Christ. The Bible says, don't forsake that. The Bible says to provoke, what that is meaning, it says to lift up one another, to encourage one another, to challenge one another. And it says, even it is so much more important as you see that day approaching. Man, if you can't see that the day is approaching faster, you are living under a rock. You've got to be living under a rock. And he says, it is so important, in Hebrews chapter ten talks about there. So we're drifting away from the Lord, we're drifting away from, you know, church fellowship. And this is a cause for, I heard a statistic today, or maybe yesterday, a lady, Christian lady said, at least forty percent of the United States still believe in God. Forty percent, I forget what else she talked about, but it just floored me. It floored me what she said, but that's probably about right. And, you know, now a lot of people claim to be a Christian, I think still seventy, eighty percent of people do that, but not by biblical definition there. So we, you know, we've learned some different things here about Gideon, about Moses, and talked about Moses and Jonah. And God, God can use, He used them, He used Moses beyond His limits. Now, God's limits were something different. He used Gideon beyond His limits. He used Jonah beyond His limits, and Jonah fought Him a little more. But it said, the paragraph above it there, too many men today have identified with too many false gods, idolatry. Men need, and I wrote above it, must step up, get going, move away from lifeless idols, robbing them of spiritual vitality and impact. When we put away our idols and embrace God's better plan for our lives, He will use us to do something bigger than what we could have ever done on our own. And he wrote a little prayer there. It says, Father, remove from my heart any dependence or loyalty on anything I place higher than you. He says, remove, get it out. Maybe that's something physically you need to do. I confess any and all idolatry I have allowed in my life, and I take full responsibility for having led into my, having led it into my heart. Forgive me and show me a better way, he says, a better way. And then he finishes up there, he says, a better way to guide me in a new direction of honoring you first and foremost in all I think, say, and do. That is what we've got to, we've got to say that, something like that to God, and, but man, you know, remove anything in my life, there's scriptures that says, look within me, Lord, and remove anything that don't need to be there. There's several of those self-cleansing scriptures. And I just wanna hit a couple of high points here on page sixty-four and sixty-five, and then I'm gonna let you take it from sixty-six on there. And we'll go through that the next time we meet. But under Hit the Streets there, page sixty-four, God goes first. Says, where Gideon lacked in his own ability, he equaled in lack of confidence. Yet, God used Gideon in a mighty way in order to defeat, to defeat a more powerful army who had held his people oppressed for far too long. You know, you see a lot of old westerns, you know what I'm saying? A couple of old Clint Eastwood ones, you know? He comes riding into town, and the town of maybe a hundred people, and they're suppressed by a group of ten mean guys. And they won't do anything, they're scared to death, and then he comes, he lifts them up and encourages them, and they, you know, they beat the bad guy. And, you know, Gideon come, except it was kind of the opposite, Gideon, they were the smaller group. And they were outnumbered just tremendously, and God says, we're gonna beat them. We're gonna beat them with a small group of people to show them who God is. Man, God can do some mighty things if we let Him. Uh, how did Gideon rise up and become victorious? He learned that spiritual success and spiritual war depends entirely upon spiritual solutions. We talked about that last Sunday, about, this is, this is, it's not a battle against flesh and blood. Gideon first had to learn that God was his source. Gideon had to learn to see himself from God's viewpoint. And I encourage you to read those scriptures that he's got right there, and it's three points about us to get going. God sees our circumstances clearly. Nothing surprises God. Nothing going on in your house, nothing going on on your job, nothing going on outside surprises him. He sees everything clearly. And, you know, and Gideon's like, man, there's no way God, I can beat the Midianites. God says, I got it. He says, are you gonna do what I've asked you to do? He says, are you going to do what I've asked you to do? Gideon finally said, well, okay. And God took care of it. He sees the circumstances clearly. God sees a warrior where we see a wimp. Gideon thought, he said, man, I'm the youngest, my family's a nobody, and there's just no way I could do anything. But Gideon was overwhelmed by circumstances, so overwhelmed, that he forgot how God saw him. We're here to do God's work, every one of us are. The third thing, God sees His ability more than our limitations, His ability, God's ability. He sees His ability more than our limitations. God told Gideon, he was wicked, and he said, Gideon, you a warrior. You are a warrior. And a lot of times, we just believe what God said. We just need to believe what God said. Rising up as a kingdom man requires alignment with God's plans and purposes. There's no room for junk. Clean your house up. We often remove God's presence from our lives through the sin of idolatry. We just be easy matter of way. Gideon had to first tear down the idols in order to open a gap for God to move in his situation. Again, Scripture references there. Read those. So which of these principles mean, are most meaningful to you? Think about that, really. Go back and read through these. Think about that. So which do you need to take cult of right now? You know, what are you struggling with? Is the circumstance what your problem is? Is the fact that you just don't think you can do it? Is that the fact, you know, you're just too wimpy, or you think you are? Or you just don't think you have any ability to do it? You know, and all of that is addressed in the Scriptures about Gideon. And what do you need to get rid of so that you can see God's way rather than your own? Some things to think about there. So you'll pick up on page sixty-six and go ahead. So the next two weeks, you'll read sixty-six through seventy-three. And that's what we will pick up when we come back together on the twenty-seventh. But that last little piece there, top of sixty-six, and he talked about it in the video. We should not expect God to do something through us outside of our home or inner circle if we're not first willing to get things right within it. You may have heard me saying, and he gives a good illustration that he's quoted or saying there, Dr. Tony Evans. The first thing you need to do, and maybe, maybe what he's talking about there, and something in your own home, maybe it's just something within you that you need to get out, that you need to get rid of. Well, let's stand and we're going to be dismissed. So again, you'll pick up page sixty-six, but read, read back through page sixty-five there. I really encourage you, because that ties into the rest of that there. So let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we come to you, Lord, just thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace. Thank you for these men, Lord, who have set time aside to come to learn about you, Lord. I pray that we will apply these things in our lives, or apply them in such a way, Lord, that it will purge, it will remove things out of our life, out of our home, out of our families that do not need to be there, Lord. We thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace, Lord, and you are such a God of patience. You've given us yet another opportunity, another chance to clean our lives up, Lord, and honor you in Jesus' name. Amen.